We've got really, after citizen comments, we have two items. We're going to handle 1.3 first. That's a brief report from staff regarding COVID-19 update discussion. Not in, it would include both financial impact, some of our health numbers, operational adjustments, et cetera. Following that, we'll get a report from the Lubbock Economic Recovery Task Force. That'll be, well, that'll be Mr. Massingale and Robert Taylor and Dave Marsinski. That's about, that should be 45 minutes worth of, the presentation's about a little less than 30, and then some time for discussion. And then following that, we'll, we'll look at, just briefly, at the draft of the new emergency declaration. And we've, we've blocked an hour and 15 minutes total for this. And then we'll go to executive session for the items that are listed on our executive session agenda for today. Okay, so, let's go now to citizen comments, item 11 on our agenda today. Courtney, how many citizen comments do we have?
We have one, from Faith Shockey.
Okay, so we will, Council, as you recall, in our, in our modified digital world, those citizen comments for work session, which are specific to the items on work session, and that would be the items that we're going to have tonight, which is the only item on our regular agenda tonight, or items, items 71 and 72. That's what citizen comments for this piece are about. We will have a citizen comments tonight in regular session for those that might want to comment on items other than these, than 71 and 72, so things that would be on the consent agenda. Okay, so, rules apply, three minute, three minutes worth of comments, and I'll turn it over, Courtney, to you. Thank you.
Okay, this is again from Faith Shockey. "I'm reaching out regarding the discussion of masks in public. While I can't attempt to understand the thought process behind requiring citizens to mask, I believe it is an overreach on our liberties and has no real data to support infringing on our civil rights to choose what we wear in public. Though the argument can be made that it helps deflect droplets from spreading when we cough or sneeze, the same could be said if we simply cough or sneeze into our elbow, as we have been taught and practiced since our childhood. I have specifically asked my grandfather, who works in infectious disease, as well as multiple local doctors, about the effectiveness of wearing masks in regard to COVID-19. And all of them have said unanimously that the masks don't work to mitigate the spread, as has been pushed by the media. I personally believe the push to wear masks is more founded in the psychological purpose of giving physical representation to the virus we cannot see, to further perpetuate the hysteria. Requiring citizens to wear masks when they would otherwise choose not to is a violation of personal civil liberties and freedom. I personally do not believe they are necessary. There are others who will not go into public if forced to wear them because of the claustrophobia, and still others who are simply uncomfortable around people wearing masks. I believe the economic and mental anguish already ensued upon our communities has gone far enough to further push unnecessary and unproven mitigation efforts on the population will have even more long-term repercussions on our economy, mental and emotional health, and our trust in our local and federal government. There are thousands of citizens who do openly choose to wear masks already. I'm asking for my family and thousands of others to not approach this by mandate or requirement, but simply give us the real, data-based facts, and allow us to decide for ourselves whether we think it is best to wear masks or not, a mask or not, and instill in us a renewed sense of confidence that this situation has not been taken too far out of hand by our elected officials. Thank you for your time, Faith Shockey."
Turn it over to Mr. Atkinson. And I would encourage everyone to mute their lines except for Mr. Atkinson. And then when you need, when you have a question or something mute, unmute, I'll be looking in and try to make sure I call on you. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good to see everybody. I will begin today by going quickly over the governor's new order. So this is GA 18. Of course, GA 18 was announced yesterday afternoon at 2:30. If anybody is following along, I will start on page three, and I'm just going to hit a few of the hot points. At the top of page three, and this is where we talk about gatherings, the governor notes that every person in Texas shall, except where necessary, to provide or obtain essential services or reopened services, minimize social gatherings, and minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household. That language was in the prior order and was largely in the order before that. There's a new addition, and I think it speaks to many of the discussions that have been held over the last few weeks. Specifically, the order calls out that people over the age of 65 are strongly encouraged to stay at home as much as possible, to maintain distance from any member of the household who has been out of the residence in the previous 14 days, and if leaving the home, to implement social distancing, good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, and sanitation. Moving on, I think reopened services are really kind of the relevant part of this. And I'll go through what the governor has called as reopen services. Note that these all begin, they start at 12:01 a.m., Friday, May 1st. So this Friday morning, as soon as we roll past midnight, these are now the reopened services. First, in-store retail services at up to 25% of the listed occupancy of the retail establishment. Second, dine-in restaurant services, also still subject to the stated 25% of the total listed occupancy of the restaurant. Now, there is a call-out here, and that call-out notes that this is only restaurants that have less than 51% of their gross receipts from the sale of alcoholic beverages. So the 51% rule, what we think of as a traditional bar, would be over the 51% and is not included. But again, dine-in restaurant services. The third, movie theaters that operated up to 25% of the total listed occupancy of an individual theater. So if you have a fourplex or a sixplex, each stands on its own. Shopping malls operated up to 25% of the total occupancy. However, food courts, play areas, and interactive displays and settings remain closed. Food can be sold, the food court, the dining area, is what is closed. Museums and libraries may open and operate at up to 25% of the total occupancy. There's an interesting nod here for those counties that have five or fewer cases, and there are a number of those in Texas. Counties that have five or fewer may file what is called an attestation with the Department of State Health Services. The rules we covered just a moment ago apply with the exception of 25% is changed to 50%. The next, and this is now on the top of page four, services provided by an individual working alone in an office. So on this one, you really have to jump into the book that is Open Texas, and it gives you a little bit of hint of what this is. This is not saying a front door, a single office, and nobody else. This is talking about an office setting in which the individuals have individual offices. Now, I would remind Council, we have had essential services open for a long time. The majority of your professional services are included in the essential service category. This does not affect them. This is an attempt to open offices that were not previously declared an essential service, provided that those individuals are working in an individual office. Golf course operations comes up next. Local government operations that include county and municipal government, but it's specific to permitting, recordation, and document filing services. Of course, we maintained those all throughout here at the city. We continue to maintain them. So this is a nod to those others. The final call-out are such additional services as the governor may declare by a future order or proclamation. Now, you take all that, and that simply says that 12:01 a.m., Friday, all of those items we discussed are open, subject to those limits, generally the 25% for the individual office. Question could be asked, what about areas that may not be on the backside of the curve as it relates to the disease? You find that one step down from there, and it says the governor may, by proclamation, identify empty county or counties in which reopened services are thereafter prohibited. So what this speaks to, to us, if you have a county in which the case counts, maybe you're climbing, they're moving the wrong direction. The only way for those reopened services not to reopen will be for the governor to call out County A, B, or C, and say, "I have put the pause button on those reopened services." We'll illustrate in a minute where Lubbock County stands, city of Lubbock. I don't feel we're anywhere close to being there, but that's out there. You move farther down in here, there was a very specific call-out and discussion about face masks, as the governor went through his call. The announcement for that in the order is individuals are encouraged to wear appropriate face coverings, but no jurisdiction can impose a civil or a criminal penalty for failure to wear a face covering. So that is explicitly stated in the order. Moving down, religious services, of course, are still open. They should be conducted in accordance with guidance issued by the Attorney General and the governor. Those are posted in public. The governor maintains a list of services that will not or cannot open under his order. People shall avoid visiting bars, gyms, public swimming pools, interactive amusement venues, such as bowling alleys and video arcades, massage establishments, tattoo studios, piercing studios, or cosmetology salons. So that is similar to what's been in there before. Of course, restaurants have come out, bars have remained in, the swimming pools, the interactive venues, those are defined possibly a little better than what they were before. Probably to conclude, would note that there's one very important statement in here. As we talk about those reopened services and those conditions and those limits, 25% individual alone in their office. The order states that conditions and limitations set forth above for reopened services shall not apply, shall not apply, to essential services. So those, those businesses included in the SISA guidelines, that's still the operative, they do not have occupancy limits or restrictions upon them. And I believe at the moment, the sense of where we stand with guidance from others, and of course, from folks in-house, is it means what it says. We cannot, as the city of Lubbock, impose such restrictions on essential services. So that's a very brief summary of that. Again, Council, I know each of you have that document, for those that are watching or listening to us. GA 18 and the book Open Texas are posted on our city website. That's mylubbock.us/covid19. So anybody that would like to see those can get to them. Mayor and Council, for my next topic, I'm going to speak briefly to a report that I received today on the Support Lubbock Fund. This, of course, was approved by Council at your prior meeting. This is the $2 million fund. It's $1 million from Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, $1 million from Market Lubbock, Inc. It's being administered by the South Plains Association of Government. As of this morning, here is the update on the disposition of those $2 million in loan funds. Since April the 22nd, there have been between 3 and 400 inquiries of the program. 91 of those businesses that began that inquiry process moved forward. As those 91 took themselves through the process, 57, 57 of the 91 completed the applications. So at the moment, SPAG is sitting on 57 complete applications. Tomorrow, Wednesday, is the first loan committee meeting. 20 of the 57 will go to loan committee tomorrow. Those 20 represent a request of approximately $700,000 if they were all funded, or an average of $35,000 each. There will be a second loan committee meeting on Friday, and then a third one next week. The 57 applications mentioned above represent all $2 million of the funding, and SPAG has also kept 10 applications that are complete that are kind of the next step. So if any of these first fall out, or they don't complete the process, there are complete applications ready to go behind them. First SPAG, they estimate the entire $2 million will have been loaned and wired out by mid-May. Of course, some will begin before that, but they estimate they'll be done. The fund will be spent out. We'll speak real quickly to the tiers. If you'll recall, the program was set up based on a business's gross income. So the first category was gross income of $100,000 up to $500,000. That category is eligible for up to a $20,000 loan. 23 of your 57 applications fit into that category, 23. Your second category is over $500,000, up to $2.5 million. This category is eligible for up to $40,000, and there are 29. 29 of the 57 are in that category there. The third, the largest category, is over $2.5 million, up to $5 million. That category is eligible for up to $60,000 in the loan, and of your 57 applications, five applications are within that largest category. The only other note that went with that is that at this time, so I'm talking all three categories, all but one of the applicant has asked for the maximum that they're allowed based on their tier or their, their category. So that fund has moved quickly. We think, again, it's fully subscribed, and those dollars will have been provided to these businesses by mid-May. So with that, Mayor, I don't know if you wish me to stop for questions or go through to the end and pause. Mayor, you're on mute.
Thanks, Mr. Atkinson. We've got about 10 more minutes for this, so why don't you go on through and show your health slides, and then we'll do Qs, Q and A at the end.
Absolutely, thank you.
Is that what you, is that what you have left?
Give you the testing numbers?
Yeah, please.
Show you the slides. Okay, testing. Lubbock continues to maintain a testing rate two times the state average. As of yesterday evening, there have been 6,615 tests administered in Lubbock. Our testing rate is growing at about 270 case tests, not cases, test per day. We do expect that to move up faster. The Walmart drive-up clinic at 114th and Quaker did open Friday. You'll see us and Walmart both begin to push some more public announcements on that. I think, you know, even more exciting for us, the city's own testing site will open tomorrow at your Patterson Library. Councilman Chides, I want to thank you for your assistance with some of our PSAs on that. Here's how the Patterson tests will work. Our drive-up site at Patterson will be open three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We're going to start on Wednesday, but we'll roll it around all three days. It is by appointment. It's by appointment. Anybody who wishes to make an appointment can do so by calling the Health Department, They will get you set up. They will take care of a lot of your pre-screening. The idea is when you pull into that testing site, it's been pre-cleared, the majority of your paperwork is done, and we're ready to get you the test. Now, very importantly, there is no cost. There is no cost to be tested at this site. If you have insurance, we will ask for your insurance, and we will build a carrier. We will not charge anything that's remaining. If you do not have health insurance, if you don't have it, there is no charge of any sorts. If you, if you get qualified for this test, we want you to have that test. There will be no follow-up billings. Nobody will ask for a dollar when you pull up or anything else. So again, we open tomorrow, 1:00 p.m. A lot of work is taking place out in the parking lot and inside in the conference room, and we're really ready to get that site up and going. With that, if you'll grant me just a quick moment's patience, I'm going to attempt to flip to the data screens. Okay, and if this is working right, there should be a pie chart on your screen, COVID cases by race and race and ethnicity.
You're good. You're good. You're good. Yes.
Okay, we'll walk quickly through these, Council. We had these available a week or so ago. These are updated as of yesterday evening. So slide one does show you the cases by race and ethnicity. This is county-wide. This is county-wide. I'll move to the next slide. This slide displaying, unfortunately, the deaths within the community. These are displayed by sex and by age. I don't think it's difficult on that to see what has become the common knowledge. COVID-19 has its most severe effects on, on those populations that are a bit older. And in fact, if you look at the chart for Lubbock, there have been no deaths below the category that includes the ages of 50 to 59, no deaths. Moving to the next, this is our death count by race and ethnicity. You see the layout there. That is relatively similar to the demographic of the community. It is not exact, but it is similar. We continue to update our geographic data. So the slide you have before you here, and do note that the only way to plot this is based on the home zip code. So this is not indicative of where it might have been contracted. It is indicative of where the infected individual lives. So this one is all cases. This is the totality of your count. You can see that in terms of residency, the two, the two zip codes that have been hit the worst are 79424 and 79416. So that's southwest and northwest part of the city. But again, these are plotted to the full extent of the county, and those zip codes continue out across the county lines for that. I'm going to go to community-acquired, so same geographic data, but this is only the subset that have community-acquired cases. And of course, community-acquired means we can't identify the particular source of infection. So again, you're plotted by zip code. You see that 424 still remains the one that seems to have the most folks residing in it that have a community-acquired case. 2316 also high, and then as those blues get lighter, you see how that carries out. Interesting thing you'll see on these charts, if you look at 79401 right in the center of Lubbock, that's largely your Texas Tech University campus. And of course, there, there are no residents on the campus at this time and have not been for several, several weeks. The Council, we've talked about looking at three metrics that are very key to what we need to see to reopen Lubbock safely. This is the first. This is your active cases by day. And so we're not plotting the total. We're taking the total less the recovered cases and less any unfortunate losses to death. What you see here is that line is pretty flat. And it's been pretty flat going back really to about the 15th of April. So we've had not a significant incline from the 15th to the 18th. And then from the 18th forwards, you see that we've maintained a very flat line of active cases. So that is the total load in the community that's being managed. Let's move to the next. This is new cases. So this is new cases per day. And if you'll recall, going back to April 11th, we had three days that had some pretty large reports, three days that were centered up around 35 cases per day. Carrying out, though, when we get back onto the 17th of April, you'll see that we've not had a single day over 15. And in fact, we've had four of those cases that were seven, four of those days that were seven cases or less per day. So your new cases per day have definitely trended downward. The line is jagged because it points by day, and it's not smoothed, but we've definitely trended downward. And I think it's always important to note that this is not because of reduced testing. We have added testing capacity. We have added cumulative tests each and every day, yet the portion of those coming back positive continues to decline. So we suggest this one is also positive information. Look at the third one. And really, this even shows up in GA 18 when you get to the port about the counties that can attest to the five or fewer cases. Part of their attestation is looking at hospital capacity. So that's what you see here is hospital capacity. The blue line across the bottom represents the number of hospitalized COVID-19 patients in your Lubbock hospitals. And that line is also very flat. That line has traded in a very, very narrow range, all the way back through the 7th of April. It's going to center up around 31 at any point in time that are hospitalized in our two big systems here. The line at the top, the orange line, that's your hospital capacity. It's not the total number of beds. It's the beds minus what's being used. And you see that that, we've maintained a delta that was greater than 650 beds until we walked through to April the 26th. Then you see the capacity line has trended down slightly. It did not trend down because of an increase in COVID patients. If you look at the bottom, that's flat. What you're seeing are the hospitals now having the ability to move back into certain types of the elective procedures, which will occupy beds. It will. But even in that case, you're still working on a delta of roughly 550 beds available in the community. We update this chart every day as well. Of course, it's posted on the website. It had fallen off, but it's back, and it will stay on the website. So taken collectively, these last three slides, Council, we feel like those present a very fair snapshot of where we stand within our community here in Lubbock related to the COVID-19. The testing continues to go at two times the state average, and that's just going to do nothing but grow, especially when Patterson comes online tomorrow. So with that, Mayor, I'll stop and take a moment of questions if we have time. If not, I'll introduce your next topic.
Let's go ahead. Let's, let's, why don't you, yeah, thank you for unsharing your screen. Let's take about, let's try to do some brief questions, and then we'll move on to the next piece. So I'll open the floor for, for questions, Council. Mr. Chides, looks like you may be unmuted. Are you ready to go?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson, I don't, I don't know about the possibility, but on the pie chart that you were showing, is there a way, I'm sure there is, to start sharing information of the senior living, a section on that pie chart, without invading privacy?
That, that is an excellent question, and I will pose that tomorrow morning and see if, see if we can do that. As long as the data sets are large enough and are blurred enough that you can't identify individuals, I would think that we can, so.
Yes, sir. All I'm asking for is just a, just a general number, you know, of the 206 Hispanics, how many of those? Well, we're, we're out of the senior living. The 191 of the white, how many were senior living? 33 black, how many were from the senior living? I don't know if we can get down to that kind of detail on the, yes, sir.
I'll be glad to run that. I do want to note, of course, that will make each of those pieces smaller. But that unknown category, at some point, as we get more and more tight, that unknown category starts to skew the data more.
Yes, it does. Second question, you mentioned cosmetology studios. They will be open?
Cosmetology salons, so anything related to the hair care is explicitly stated as closed in GA 18.
Okay, just, again, just a point of clarification for the cosmetologists, barbers that are out there. Information for them.
Information for them. Again, would you repeat the date up until the 18th? I'm sorry, what was the date on that?
Governor Abbott yesterday in his press conference indicated that the target date for phase two, which we presume includes those things that are called out, is closed now. The target date for that was May 18.
1/8?
1/8, yes, sir, 1/8.
Okay, 1/8, okay.
However, I would add to that, Mr. Channis, he suggested that is 1/8, but his order is only effective through the 15th, which is two weeks from Friday. So it contemplates him doing something between now and then.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up, they're a big part of the community as all small businesses are. But I've been receiving quite a few calls from the barbers, cosmetology people. They're, they, they want to start working, but again, there, let's see what the Economic Task Force has to say about it also. Looking forward to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Channis. Mr. Christian?
Yes, sir. I have a question back onto your original information about new rules and regulations. And I just wanted a clarification in regards to the rules that are now applying to essential businesses versus those rules that are applying to what she's called reopen businesses. Is what's the difference? It almost sounds like essential businesses can do pretty much whatever they want in regards to capacity. Would that be a fair assessment of what you, what you said? For example, a Walmart or other stores, they don't, they can have as many people in their stores as they would like. Is that correct?
That, that does appear to be what it says, yes.
Okay, so, so we are, we still have, in essence, we still have a set of rules for essential. And then we have a set of rules for what we're calling reopen, or I'm going to even call them what they were prior to this time, is non-essential. Would that be, would that be a fair assessment of that, of that statement?
I, I think it would. I would make one note. GA 18 references back to the presidential and the CDC callouts, okay? Those callouts quite explicitly do state, you have to maintain social distance, you have to maintain good hygiene in those types. In fact, the presidential guidelines, and it doesn't apply to retail, but as it applies to a gathering, still call out 10 as a number for gatherings. So the, the best interpretation we can give you at this moment, essential services will have whatever limits Lubbock or any other community may have put on them. So here, the two, our large home improvement stores have a limit of 100 exclusive of employees, 100. 12:01 AM this Friday, that limit no longer applies. However, they are still subject to maintaining the social distance and the good hygiene practices and so forth. But outside of that, we don't read that there's a local authority to do anything different.
So we won't have lines in front of our building supply stores or those others that fall under the category of essential businesses? And I'm making a broad statement, but that's pretty much what's going to happen come Friday.
Not necessarily. I mean, they, they could choose to limit their own occupancy. We hope that they'll be responsible. We're, we have a call with them tomorrow. We've invited them to, Mr. Massingale's invited into a phone call to try to talk through that. We will very much enforce the social distancing piece. And if they're not taking care of the inside of their stores, the store manager runs a risk of being cited for that. We, we, we can't let the progress we've made on this be blown away by five or six big stores in this community that, that, and we think they'll be good citizens and we certainly hope they will be.
But, but the, the, at the end of the day, they can have as many people in their store as possible, as, as allowable. But they're still at the social distance.
That's not what the governor said yesterday, but that's what his order says. And you can take that up with the governor if you feel like me and find there'd be conflict there. Because he called out what a good job HEB and Home Depot were doing specifically. Y'all watched the press conference just like I did. But when you read his order, that's not what it says.
Got you.
All right. The thing I, one thing I, one thing I would mention is that we're updating our data slides daily. If citizens want to know about that, please send them to our website. They're much more accurate than the state website. If you look on their website for our testing data, it shows us in about half the number of tests that we've done. I'm not sure where they're getting that information, but it's not correct. Ours is updated on a daily basis and we will continue to do that. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson, would you mind repeating the new test site location and the telephone number again, please, so everybody can hopefully write that down? Absolutely. Thank you. Patterson Library. Patterson Library, which is located at 1836 Parkway Drive. 1836 Parkway Drive. That site will be open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. If demand requires, we'll extend those hours or add days. We're going to open tomorrow 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. You do need to have an appointment. You gain that by calling the Health Department. 775-2933. This is all gone out publicly through a press release. It's going to be posted on our sites. We'll push it on social. And again, the final piece of this site, there is no cost. There is no cost to be tested. If you have health insurance, we will bill the health insurance. If it doesn't pay or comes back with a, with a, with a gap, you're not billed. If you do not have health insurance, there is no cost. We will not ask you for a dollar. Okay, and you will not be billed later. We want you to come to this site, but we need you to call 775-2933 first.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item 1.2. It's certainly related to this, and any question that you might have from 1.3 that you didn't get to ask, we could ask it. Ms. Patterson-Harris, we had, had her hand up.
I'm sorry, Sheila.
I have mine up, but I can wait.
I was, I had a couple of things. I just, number one, I just want to say thank you for the Patterson Branch test site. I am hoping that we'll be able to really get some folks that are in need of being tested. In addition to the piece said that is no charge, I think is, is a big plus for me. I'm glad that you answered that question that I was going to ask Mr. Atkinson regarding pushing that information out. I know that we have the basic information on the Health Department website through the COVID-19. Having something that's going to go out a little bit tighter, I think is really going to be beneficial. I have a question with regard to the movie theaters and the 25% of occupancy. And with the understanding that there are up to 16 different theaters, separate theaters. Are we talking about 25% of the total buildings capacity? Or are we talking about 25%? Are we only going to live at 25% for each theater? Because if we're looking at the facility, everybody might go want to see one, one movie and know that means no one else will be allowed to see something else. Not to say that I think it's a good idea to even have folks go to the movie or have folks rush there. I'm just, I'm just curious as to how we'll monitor that or that's actually going to be set up.
Okay, so if you'll allow me, I want to read this one again verbatim. Movie theaters that operate at up to 25% of the total listed occupancy of any individual theater for any screening. So if you have four theaters side by side, a fourplex, each one of which was originally rated for 100 people to sit in there, each of those individual four will have 25 people. You don't get to put 100 in room one and then have zero in two, three, and four.
Yeah, I, I think I missed that when I was looking at it and when I was listening. I think I was holding on to what I thought I saw before. So thanks for clarifying that. That just bothered me. Well, there's a lot of stuff with this that bothers me, but we'll keep moving forward. Thanks for the information.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think Ms. Joyce said she would wait till our, the next piece.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, let's just, if you don't mind, let's, let's do that. I think once we hear from the task force, then we'll have a more robust discussion both here and then we'll post it for executive session too.
Well, this is really about 79416.
Okay, please, okay, go ahead, okay.
Because 79416 is in my district. And I want people to know that, that that is related to the nursing home situation. So I don't want everybody to get scared and go running in different directions. That was a very unique situation where we discovered some issues there. So it's, we're, we're okay. The other one I thought was kind of funny, 79424 is that district where we have the annexation Wiggles, as I call them. I don't know if the people who live outside the city within 424 are the reason for that, I don't know, but I thought it was kind of interesting. And the last thing is I have had someone to tell me that when Mr. Atkinson announced that we were making our hand sanitizer in one of our city departments, that they thought that all of us were using that. And I wanted him to repeat who's using the hand sanitizer that's made by one of them. Bless you.
Thank, thank you. And yes, ma'am, and I think I've got the exact number. I believe that we have made six liters of that product. It is being made by your, your labs that process our water and our wastewater tests, the full-blown chemical labs. All but two of those leaders are actually out at the ELC. So that facility continues to run seven days a week. It has now for more than six weeks and there's not yet an end in sight. Putting that out there, that's where I've got the largest group in a, in a single space. That's also a group that we're not allowing new folks into it or folks to come out of it. We're keeping it contained with where it is. And we're using that product there. I think there are two bottles of that product here in city hall. What's our logic behind doing that? If we can use our own product, anything else that's available, whether it comes in through the emergency management process or it's available in the market, we're not consuming it. It's available for others to use. And I've not given, none of it has gone out to anywhere other than those two locations.
Thank you. Nice clarification. I think Ms. Joyce's point about the zip codes is good, is interesting too, because if you think about it, 03, 04, 07, 15, 16, 23, and 24, all go well outside the city limits. So it's not just the city. I mean, 23 and 24 and 07 go all the way to the county lines. Both 23 and 24 to the south, 07 to the west. So just where it's all on our website, you can look at it, but those are, that's a very, very valid point. Okay, let's move on to item 1, 2 in executive session. Mr. Atkinson?
Certainly, Mayor, and if I might offer just a simple clarification, we're going to still stay in work session. It'll be 1.2 work session. I want to introduce councilman.
Do they know? Wrong link.
Thank you. Want to introduce Councilman Steve Massengale. Councilman Massengale is one of your two co-chairs of the Lubbock Economic Recovery Task Force. This next presentation will be the results that that group has put forth, and it's been, I think somebody said it this morning, and I'll agree, I have never seen a community task force move so fast and do such good work in such a close period of time. With that, Mr. Massengale, I see you're unmuted. Mr. Yearwood, if you would promote the two panelists, that would be co-chair Robert Taylor and subcommittee chair, Mr. Dave Marzenkowski. Do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I'm going to pause here. I'd like to get Robert Taylor and Dave Marzenkowski on the screen before I make my comments. So if they could get promoted, please. There's Dave and there's Robert. Okay. Again, Mr. Atkinson, thank you, and thank you for the information that you shared with us earlier. We're all ready for a little bit of good news. I'll just want to make some brief comments. Before I talk about the task force, I want to talk about and just thank the city staff. The amount of work that we've done over the past few days and the things that we've dealt with over the past few weeks. You know, we, when we needed somebody to jump, there was not anybody there to ask how high, they just jumped as high as they could. And Jared and his team have put in countless hours supporting the efforts of the mayor and the council. And, you know, I just, I can't thank everyone enough for what they've done. The task force, 22 people from our community with the leadership of my co-chair, Robert Taylor. We first met on April 20th. This is a group of people from our community that represent a very broad base of businesses and organizations. They, they bring a lot of ability, mental ability, and they understand how to innovate. They also understand how to move fast and make decisions. And we've done just that. The work we've done over the week and a few days feels like Robert, Robert, Dave probably agree, it feels like we've been working on this for six, six weeks or something, but it's only been a week and a few days. I counted up, we've already had 12 meetings, hundreds of man-hours, and lots and lots of Zoom. I think we all look forward to having face-to-face meetings again. Countless revisions this group went through. I think we all wished we had a crystal ball as to what Austin was thinking, and we'll get into that. As you can see, we probably didn't. One thing that was clear though, is this group was laser focused on getting Lubbock back to work. Bottom line. Doing everything they could to get Lubbock back to work and find a plan that would balance, as we've talked about many times. Like the mayor said at first, lives and livelihoods. I've never seen, in all my community experience, a group work so efficiently. It'll definitely go down as one of my prouder moments working with folks in Lubbock, Texas. I, I think the council will be pleased with the work as, as we communicate the plan. Mr. Marzenkowski is going to go through the, the highlights and understand how we've made a decision to pivot in light of the, the governor's order. But I look forward to him sharing it with you. Mr. Taylor, I'll kick it to you before we ask Dave to go through the slides.
Good. Thank you, Steve. I'd like to thank Steve. He did a lot of heavy lifting on this committee and this task force. And I think that's why we came out with what we thought was a pretty good plan. If you look back at the state's plan, it says in there many times it set a minimum standard with minimum protocol. And I believe that to be true. Our Lubbock Plan Outline was built to put several more people back to work and really gave, I think, best practice guidance for we could have a successful reopening. It was a very diverse committee. There was a lot of people that had a lot of opinions and everybody got to voice them. We had a lot of experts. We did reach out to many local groups. We also reached out to many local business people. And we did, we had a lot of research material backing up and giving us support for what we put together. I think the committee is, is now thankfully ongoing. I don't think it's a one and done deal. We still have the educational component that has yet to meet. And I think probably with this committee and with this task force comes a communication piece that we built around best safe practices. I think it's built to reach out to our citizens as well as business owners. And as they can, as hopefully we can impact behavior and build even more chance of success. The key to the goal is to mitigate the growth of the coronavirus while returning as many citizens as possible and as safely to work. It's important for us to stay focused on what we need to do and control the virus. It's just one step. This is ongoing process. So this is just step one to, to the successful returning to work of citizens of Lubbock. And it depends on our citizens and our And it depends on our citizens and our business owner self-discipline. Uh, it was, it was encouraging to see how many people are so bought in to Lubbock and how many people are giving themselves so we can get Lubbock and the citizens back to where they need to be. Um, one of those, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Markowski. Uh, he took on this task of our subcommittee, uh, to put together the details for a very, very well-thought-out, uh, six, I think, successful plan to get us back to work. When we monitored, had to make some changes to accommodate the governor, uh, but I think we did that in a good fashion also. So Dave?
Thanks, Robert. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate your time. Appreciate everybody's time. Thank you for this opportunity to present the work that we did. I want to start off by, um, kind of echoing a few comments that were made. Um, this, this group, I've been a part of a lot of volunteer, volunteer groups in my life, um, and I've never been a part of a group that has been so committed and so passionate, um, putting the best interest of our city way above any personal interest, and that was to a person. Um, it was a very, uh, exciting group, um, to work with, and I think, you know, with the work that we have, uh, completed, we're, we're all very proud of it. I think it's worth noting, um, that, you know, for us, the most important thing was the health and safety of Lubbock. Uh, but we believe very strongly that our economy is a big part of that health and safety. And so we had really engaging debates, um, from the medical group to, to the business group, and everybody was respectful, everybody was understanding of both sides. Nobody realized this is not, you know, we're kind of rewriting a playbook. And so, and there are so many things that go into it. This is such a, a complex, um, situation we find ourselves in, and there aren't any easy answers. Um, and so that's why I think it was so critical for us to have this group, and my thanks go out to everybody who's on this task force. I look forward to working with them as we move through this and get Lubbock through this crisis. For us, it was about, you know, big piece of this was getting employees back to work, and I know that's all, that's what we all want. Um, you know, the governor's order yesterday, um, you know, I can't imagine the challenges when you look at a state as large as Texas and as diverse as we are, how you can come out with, you know, an umbrella of, of guidance that he did with G A eighteen and his other two, um, executive orders, um, you know, and we know, um, Lubbock was well-represented, um, by Mark McDougall and Carla Moran on that group, and the work that they did is, is truly, um, I, I can't imagine all the give and accomplish the last week to get the governor to a point that he was yesterday. Um, that being said, with all due respect, um, I think our task force, um, was hoping for something more in terms of opening Lubbock. I mean, Lubbock is a, um, one community of many in the state of Texas, and we think, you know, we have a different set of circumstances. And so I'm in the unique position to be able to share this with you. I'm also going to share with you some of the differences, because I think it's important for our citizens and for you, uh, as our city council to understand that, um, where we, where we were at at two o'clock yesterday is not where we find ourselves at, uh, three o'clock today. And, um, not that we're, not that we're criticizing the governor, we understand his challenges, but at the same time, um, there's a lot of folks, we were hoping to get back to work this week. Um, that being said, I'm going to go ahead and, um, but there are my screen. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Started here, uh, Mark, could we bring up the slide deck, please? All right, Dave, these should roll along with, hopefully they, you've seen this, but
Yeah.
That should get, that gives you the, the slide deck as we walk through it, so.
And I've got, I've got my notes from, from this, and so hopefully everything I cover lines up with the slides, but we'll obviously take questions towards the end. And so, um, real quick acknowledgement, um, both during this process, specifically as it relates to this Lubbock Safe Program, uh, Jared and his team have done amazing work. They have been available to us whenever needed. Um, they have gone above and beyond repeatedly, and, uh, I think this is a great example of it. So, um, I'm happy to introduce, um, kind of, um, you know, I would guess the sugar of this, of this conversation, which is the Lubbock Safe Program. It's a voluntary certification program for Lubbock businesses. Um, what we, what Jared, what we did created is a portal that'll be open hopefully sometime tomorrow, definitely before, um, May first, when we're, uh, hoping to put this program in place. But, um, what this is, is a, a ability for our businesses to go online and self-certify themselves to our, uh, list of, of, of requirements or guidelines that we're going to be sharing here during this meeting. And, um, and if they, they go through that process, they self-certify, they're going to follow that. Uh, Jared has assembled a team of his staff who will go out and actually present stickers similar, can we go back to slide one? Um, that look just like this, this, uh, video image that, when it comes up, that they can display in their window to kind of acknowledge that they're Lubbock safe, uh, meaning the guidelines that were, that, that came from the recommendation of our task force. So our hope is, uh, the city council, um, you know, approves these, uh, guidelines, and if so, takes effect in, in, in lockstep with the governor's order of twelve oh one a.m. Friday, May first. Um, it's important to note licensed, um, or regulated businesses must file the regulated guideline set forth by, uh, the relevant, uh, regulatory entity. Nothing in Lubbock, in the Lubbock Safe Guidelines supersedes, replaces, or, uh, excuses regulatory compliance. So what we did is we broke this thing up, and our initial, our initial area is general health and safety guidelines. Um, these guidelines will, uh, apply to all categories of businesses. Um, and, uh, with few exceptions, and those exceptions will be broken out by category that we'll show you as we move through each individual category. The, these go to the degree of, of, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I'm sorry, I was just making sure the slide deck was working. My apologies, it is now, okay.
So can we move to the next slide, please? And so this kind of covers what I just said, which is these are general safety, health and safety guidelines for all businesses. Um, all exceptions and additions are noted in the following different sections by category. Um, and so I'm going to quickly go through those with, with everyone on this, on this video call. Um, we are, as a group, recommending that hand sanitizers or hand sanitizer stations should be placed near every entrance of every business, but still it's preferred. So, you know, you could have a Perrell, um, um, bottle next to the front door and a table, and that would accommodate these, this, this, this request. Where I'm going to have a problem with today, I'm going to ask Stephen, Robert, and Luttrell, and, and I want to, I want to thank Luttrell, too, for her service on, 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 on our task force. Um, I'm going to have a really hard time, because there's lots of places we initially used the word must, that we're now having to use the word should. And so for the last week, we've been must, must, must. This is an opportu, this is an area where we, we were trying to require hand sanitizer stations was our, our thought process, and now we're saying they should be placed. This is all based off of the governor's executive order. Um, face coverings are strongly recommended for all employees and for all customers entering any business. Now, there are going to be some exceptions when we get through restaurants and warehousing where face masks, face coverings, we are requesting those to be required, uh, of employees, not, not patrons. Um, but in, in general, we're asking, we're, we're strongly recommending, and at the end of my presentation, we're going to share some PSAs that our communications group has put together, um, that, uh, the, the community is going to, all of the mediums, uh, that are out there, media mediums that are out there are going to be sharing going forward, because we do feel it is extremely important for Lubbock to understand that we are in the middle of a crisis, and we do need to take this extremely seriously. And, you know, it is, we believe strongly, it's been proven that face covering is help. Um, we also believe in the liberties of our country, like, um, that were shared earlier in this, in this meeting, and so we're, we are simply strongly recommending for all customers and employees to wear face masks. Um, we want to reiterate the fact that ask at-risk people, those with pre-existing health conditions that COVID nineteen has a, has a, has a tendency of causing real problems with, or, 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 um, our citizens over the age of sixty-five, to please still stay home as much as possible. Um, we're asking for, for our businesses to put up signage notifications to customers that strongly encourage this, uh, that, that at-risk populations take all precautions, protect themselves from contracting COVID nineteen. I think that's critical for us as we move forward, because it's not just our at-risk folks who need to protect themselves, it is everybody else who needs to do the right thing as we move forward to also protect our at-risk population. This is not a, uh, limited to just one group. This is, this is a whole community coming together. Typical practice, six-foot social distancing protocols throughout businesses, businesses for everyone, from customers to employees. Um, all employees need to be trained on appropriate cleaning and disinfection protocols, um, hand sanitation, hand sanitizing, and respiratory. Employees, including volunteers, and I think that's important to note for, for our places of worship when we get to that. You know, this is, anybody who's, who is helping, both paid and unpaid, should use hand sanitizers or wash their hands upon entering the place of work. And we, we strongly recommend that employees use hand sanitizer, wash their hands between customers as well. Going to go to the next slide. Cashiers are strongly encouraged to use hand sanitizer, wash their hands between each customers, for sure. We're also asking for a barrier to be placed between the cashier and the customers. I think we've seen this at, at, uh, stores and restaurants. It may be something as simple as a couple of chairs or a small table, but to create a little bit more of a distance gap to ensure that six-foot social distancing when people are cashing out. Now, if you go back, please, I think we got a couple more quick ones to go over there that are important. Forehead temperature scan and health survey of all employees, including volunteers, should be taken prior to every shift, and anybody who fails, um, actually answers affirmatively to any of the health survey questions that our medical committee is providing, or has a temperature in excess of a hundred degrees, needs to go home. And if you read the governor's, um, guidance in, in his, in his book yesterday, you know, it goes on to say when they can come back to work, and we endorse that for sure. Um, we're also, we realize that it may be difficult at this time to get a forehead temperature thermometer, and so we're asking, you know, we're telling businesses to please use the health survey until you're able to get forehead thermometers. But our hope is that our businesses take that seriously enough to understand that we're asking for all businesses in time, um, in, in a very short period of time to acquire forehead thermometers, to be able to take the temperature of their employees and volunteers. Next slide, please. House's payment option should be encouraged. Frequently used work areas should be sanitized and clean, and cleaned every thirty minutes, like we've seen in, like, Market Street, um, and other places. And then required signage, directional distance markings on floor, employee sanitation guidelines, et cetera, be posted. Um, you know, I think Jared and his team are working through some signage to help, um, our businesses out that we can offer as a supplement to this guidance. And, um, businesses should take affirmative steps to comply with all, like we talked earlier, all, all publicly, um, public health regulations, sanitation guidelines, codes applicable to your industry. You know, stopping with this particular category for just a second, I, I will say, because I really want to stress this, it was our task force's desire prior to the governor's announcement that all employees across Lubbock be required to wear face masks. Uh, we felt that was the right thing to do. Uh, we understand where the governor's coming from, and again, we support him, but as, we think it's important for everyone that's, um, who's watching this to understand that our hope was to, to, to really create, to give guidance to our employers and our employees to create the safest environment possible as patrons began to frequent their establishments. Closed shopping malls, so South Plains malls and the like. Um, we've got a few additional guidelines from our general health and safety guidelines that I want to share now. Um, per the governor's order, it's twenty-five percent occupancy limit for the enclosed common area, based on the fire marshal rating. Real important to note, um, this excludes employees of the business, this is just patrons at twenty-five percent. Uh, we have, we have acknowledged, um, with, with people close to the governor that that was the intent of his desire. That being said, there is the concern that that could change, because it was a gray area, but we're, we're, we're advocating for employees to be left out of that twenty percent occupancy limit number. We're also asking that children under the age of eighteen be accompanied, should be accompanied at all times by an adult parent or guardian at enclosed shopping malls. Food air, per the governor's order, food courts, dining areas, players, interactive displays and other settings, um, um, which facilitate social gathering should remain closed. Real quick, I just want to kind of give some, some caveats. Our initial hope was to get fifty percent occupancy as a, as a task force, not twenty-five percent. But per the governor's orders, we are fully, uh, supporting his desire to start at twenty-five percent. We, we hope and pray that he moves that to fifty percent at base, base to, uh, May eighteenth. Large store, big box retail, you know, Randy, I want to kind of speak to this, because your observations are correct as it relates to what we believe the governor's order is saying, which is, um, this is, these are potentially essential services, especially as relates to a Walmart, um, or a Home Depot. And this guidance, you know, it kind of opens up the door if they are essential for them to have more than what we're requesting. Our hope is, though, is that the big box retailers out there who are watching this in Lubbock, listen to the concept that we're trying to, to show here, which is, um, based off its size, we created three different categories of buildings, thirty to forty-five thousand square foot facilities, um, two hundred people, or twenty, limited twenty-five percent, whichever is less, forty-five to sixty percent, um, it limits to fifty, twenty-five percent, or two hundred and fifty people, and over sixty thousand square foot facilities have an occupancy limit of twenty-five percent for the fire marshal rating, or three hundred people, whichever is less. All those numbers are excluding employees. Restaurants. Um, I believe, uh, Jared kind of went through the fifty-one percent sign as determined by T A B C is what is going to determine a restaurant from a bar. Um, bars are not a part of phase one. Um, I will tell you, they were a part of phase one with our original task force proceedings. Twenty-five percent occupancy limit, uh, excluding employees for restaurants, um, minimum of six customers per table. We're encouraging reservations to reduce customer wait, waiting in groups for a table to open. All valet services should be suspended except for customers whose vehicles display placards or plates for disabled parking. The typical six-foot social distancing in waiting areas and outside sections. Self-serve buffets and stations should be avoided. Patrons should only order items from a menu. So, you know, this includes, um, drink stations, I believe, and everything else, like, yeah, customers should be given a new cup with each drink refill. So we're trying to eliminate the, the need for, or the possibility of people to be accessing self-serve food buffets or drink, drink stations and potentially creating a problem there. Um, we are asking to require face coverings for all employees in restaurants. All place settings, utensils, menus, condiments, single, to be single-use or should be cleaned and sanitized after every customer. We're asking for only covered straws, uh, to be served, and then typical cleaning sanitation that you would expect, and a designated manager to oversee that. Now, real quick, the other caveat that is, you know, when the government put twenty-five percent, our hope as of yesterday was for it to be at fifty percent as a task force, um, but we are, you know, we, we are, we have changed that to twenty-five percent for the governor's orders. Non-essential medical, um, so your dentist, optometrist, and other non-emergency outpatient services. We heard yesterday the government opened that up with a twenty-five percent occupancy limit, uh, excluding employees. Um, we're asking that customers' patients should be seen by appointment only, stay in their car until they're invited in for their appointment. We're asking for customers to go through a forehead temperature scan and health survey, and if they, if they've answered affirmatively to any questions, or if they have a temperature over a hundred degrees Fahrenheit, we're asking that they be sent home. Um, we are similar to what we did with, um, the general health and safety guidelines. We're, we're asking people, you know, to use the health survey until they can get the proper forehead thermometers. Uh, our hope is, is that, you know, especially non-essential medical, that they can get those relatively quickly. Children under the age of eighteen and special needs customers needing assistance may be accompanied by a guardian or parent during treatment, and we're, we're strongly encouraging that those guardians or parents to wear a face mask when they go back with their child. Employees treating a, a client are strongly encouraged to wear both a face shield or a face, to wear a face shield or a face mask. Employees are encouraged to wear gloves and dispose of those after every use. Work areas equipment are to be cleaned and sanitized after each customer. File care providers, so in a lot of cases, we were able to find guidance that helped us to craft, uh, our guidelines. And Texas Health and Human Services had guidelines that we were able to work through and, um, for the most part, take as-is. and for the most part take as is, in terms of the guidance here. So all four of these items on this section really come off of the, the guidance provided by Texas Health and Human Services. This first item is a list of all the folks that can enter a childcare facility. The next one talks about forehead temperature scans and health surveys for all people entering the facility. The same rules apply as it relates to answering affirmatively to any of the questions in the health survey or having a temperature over 100 degrees, they need to be sent home. Requiring pickup and drop off of children outside of the facility unless there's a legitimate reason why the parent needs to be asked in. And then in, in terms of the food, ensure that each child is provided individual meals and snacks, just no family-style meals. I think one point there, this was a big topic for us. We realized as a group early on that in order to put people from Lubbock back to work, we needed to solve this childcare provider challenge. And so, I mean, we were, we were constantly working through, you know, the fact that the messaging needed to be out there, that we really, we, we're going to rely heavily on our childcare providers out there across the city to, to open up and hopefully, you know, be able to work with and, and actually satisfy the need that's going to exist in our city as more people from Lubbock get back to work. Event centers, or no, houses of worship, I'm sorry, a little bit, houses of worship, so our churches. We got most of these guidelines from a joint letter provided by the Texas Attorney General and the, and the governor of Texas and guidelines that they had set forth. There are some caveats. The first one is, is one of those caveats. And so we felt it was important to note to churches in Lubbock that we have an outdoor gathering category. And the rules that apply for the outdoor gathering category could make, could make it conducive to churches to have outside services. And so we asked them to not, not to, to go look at that section and see if it applies to you. This is especially important as it relates to drive-in styled services that we've seen across the country and in Lubbock as well. We're asking for childcare to remain closed unless they can meet the childcare facility guidelines listed above that I just went through. We ask that attendees and, and for our churches to ensure that the attendees sit with their family unit or group and use social distancing between each unit. And if necessary, add more service times to facilitate social distancing. We're asking for alternate rows between attendees. That's all social distancing, common sense, I think. Plurity and or utterance should dismiss, dismiss attendees by family unit or row to main social distancing as people exit the building. Again, I think that's common sense in terms of how we're trying to encourage social distancing. Staff should sanitize seats and frequently use surfaces between services. We're asking to refrain from passing collection plates and instead provide a selection, a central collection box in the building or encourage online giving. And then as well, consider how the sacraments can be administered without the attendees touching the same surfaces and objects. Event centers, you'll note in this document is there's an event centers. There are a number of things that would normally have been included in event centers that are part of our phase two per the government orders. And this one reads a little bit differently and says, if allowed by executive order GA18 or subsequent order, this, this section applies to businesses that provide indoor, outdoor event space and/or otherwise allow for gatherings larger than those recommended by the president of the CDC, such as movie theaters, museums and libraries that were specific to the government, governor's orders. But then we also have things like funeral homes in here that we're still trying to get clarification on. But our hope is, is funeral homes, weddings and those kinds of things will be allowed in this guideline and we can make that known to the public as soon as we have clarification. Same rules apply 25% occupancy limit. If there's food being served, we're asking for the resident guidelines to be followed. Any ticket sales should occur online and not at the box office. So if you're going to the movies, make sure you buy your ticket before you go online. Strict social distancing needs to occur or should occur while seating. For rows that are not six feet deep, that every other row should be used. Customers should sit with their party and they should be six-foot separation between parties. We've seen guidance that said two seats in a movie theater constitutes six feet. Components of these businesses that have interaction, interactive functions or exhibits, including child players should remain closed. If there are pictures being taken, we're asking for a dedicated area that is cleaned if applicable between each group being photographed. A dedicated area at least six feet from customer seats can be provided for any speakers, presenters, facilitators, or the like. And then of course, all chairs, table equipment should be cleaned and sanitized after each event or activity. Outdoor gatherings, similar to event centers. If allowed by executive order GA18 or a subsequent order, this group will go beyond, you know, houses of worship and whatnot because it, it could include graduations, concerts, weddings, political gatherings, demonstrations and the like. Since these were not specifically stated in GA18, we're still looking for a little bit of guidance from the governor and his staff as to whether or not we can include them in the section. Typical social distancing guidelines required. We felt it important to reiterate that face covering should be strongly encouraged. Food and drinks should be kept in a designated area. Relevant restaurant guidelines applied to this category as it does with all the other categories that have restaurant services. Same rules above as it relates to pictures and having us, having a dedicated area for that that can be cleaned between use. We're asking for advanced social distancing between the speakers, presenters, facilitators, and the first row of seats of 10 feet. All tables, chairs, equipment, et cetera, should be cleaned and sanitized before and after the event. We're asking for all trash to be cleaned up two hours after the event and have a manager responsible for inspecting that area to ensure everything is as clean as the area was prior to the event. And then of course, they should, all participants should comply with all laws and regulations of the city of Lubbock. We had some requests about outdoor farmer and flea markets. And so we put a category together for that. And it's really just, you know, same rules apply from the outdoor event category if, for this, if there's food being sold or served, then the restaurant, relevant restaurant category guidelines apply. If there's goods and services being provided or sold, then the relevant non-essential retail category applies. Final group that's in our, our guidelines for phase one, warehousing, distribution and manufacturing. We received some great guidance from groups in Lubbock in this particular area. All the general health and safety guidelines apply. Employees and customers within these facilities should be able to practice social distancing at all times while doing their job. It is a critical piece to this puzzle. You can't, people need to be able to work and still practice social distancing. All key touchpoints should be cleaned and sanitized every two hours. All touchpoints on MHE equipment, hand trucks, et cetera, should be cleaned and sanitized before and after each shift or and or between operator changes. This is another area where we're asking that all employees wear face coverings upon entering and in all common areas. Face coverings may be removed if they're trying to utilize voice-activated equipment. Fractors, disinfectant wipes or spray should be provided to sanitize cab interior, touchpoints, door handles, et cetera, at the begin, beginning and end of each shift. And drivers should be able to practice social distancing and wear face covering while making delivers. Hand sanitizer should be made available in, for use in the cab of the truck. Now that concludes phase one. I want to kind of quickly go through our, our thoughts on phase two. Initially, personal care businesses were a part of our phase one offering. Obviously, the governor has asked that that be omitted. And so we moved it down to phase two, but our, our hope and prayer is that, that things happen the way they need to in order for the government to open that up when we go to phase two. We had fitness gyms and facilities in our phase one initially. And, and same thing, you know, since the governor has taken those out, we've moved those down to phase two. We also had bowling alleys in our phase one and those got pushed back to phase two with the governor's orders. We did have nightclubs as part of phase two. We added bars to that per the governor's orders, but we did have bars as a part of restaurants in our initial phase one. Public swimming pools were always a part of our phase two. Amusement parks, arcades and bounce houses were always a part of our phase two. And then youth and adult team sports were always a part of our, our phase two. We felt especially with youth team sports, with the schools being closed, it was not right to be having team sports going on at that point in time. Additional areas that the governor particularly pointed out as, as potentially phase two or somewhere down the road, massage establishment, tattoo studios, piercing studios, studios, cosmetology salons, trade schools and those kinds of things are all, are all omitted per governor or GA18. I will tell you, we had those a part of phase one with our initial offering. Matt, I think concludes my report. Steve?
Dave, thank you so much. You did a great job. It's, as you can see, council, quite a bit of work went into this and at this point, I'm very glad for you to see it. I'll turn it back over to the mayor and, and go.
Well, look, I, I want to just thank, thanks. I texted Steve while Dave was presenting about how remarkable the detail was. I've seen a lot of reopening reports in the, or plans in the last week. I'm not sure I've seen, in fact, I know I've not seen what this is well done. So Dave, Robert, Steve, Latrell, and the other 18 members of your, of your, and, and the, the experts you had along with you, you did a great job. Thank you very much for your work.
Can I say one more thing before? I mean, I did leave something out that I forgot to bring up. Because I think this is, this is critical. The medical committee that we had was made up of some amazing folks and I, I can name them if, if you want, but you know, just to give you an example of, of the way that we work together, because I think it's really important, you know, our medical group had strong feelings towards face coverings and requiring face coverings. And they had, you know, different types of, of facilities that they were worried about being more conducive towards the spread of COVID-19 than others that we may or may not have been including in phase one. And, you know, the, the conversation and dialogue was always very respectful. And quite frankly, I, I really respected and appreciated where everybody was coming from. Because again, there were no right answers. And I, I feel it's important for us to acknowledge specifically the medical committee, but really all, we had a, we have an education committee that's made up of a greater people, a medical committee. We have our task force, the, our, our committee that we had working on these guidelines and we had another one for communication and, and the work that they each did and the way that they worked together, it was truly remarkable, Mayor. And I, I think you should be proud of the fact that you've got dedicated citizens in this, in this town who have such passion for our great city.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. I, I, I just, I'd underscore that. I've, I've said publicly before, I'll say again, that every one of these citizens that we called to ask them to serve, they said yes. And some of these are very, very busy people and, and have practices that in the medical profession as an example, and you know how difficult it is for a medical professional to take time away from his or her practice to be on a committee and, but willing to do that. So I'm, I'm thankful for that. And I want to point out that your work's not done. And so there's still work that's being done and it will be very instructive to us as we move forward. Steve, before we go to comments on this, Jared, would, would, would you make a couple of comments about the proposed new emergency order that we'll be considering tonight? Because I think it fits. And Steve, you want, you want to?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. Let me interject. We've got three short videos that, that we need to finish this presentation. And just let me, for clarification, our group broke into four committees. We had our medical committee that Dave referred to that were vitally important to help us make our decisions. We have an education committee. We have a communications committee and then our Get Lubbock Open Committee, which was chaired by Mr. Marcinkowski. So if you would indulge us, what we feel like is so important as we move forward with the Safe Lubbock program is communication. So with that, I'm going to let Mr. Yearwood tee up three PSAs that have already been produced by our communication team.
Lubbock is reopening safely. When you do your part, we can make Lubbock safe again.
I'm Michelle with Market Street. I have three kids and a mother with stage four lung cancer. So I wear a mask, do everything to protect my mother and to protect our guests. I wear my mask, you wear yours.
Keep a six-foot distance. Wear your mask. Wash your hands. Don't let your guard down as we can't afford to go backwards. Together, we can keep Lubbock safe and open. Lubbock is reopening safely. When you do your part, we can make Lubbock safe again.
Hey Lubbock, we're open and our businesses are ready and excited to serve you. But remember, stay safe and that we're in this together. So wear your masks. I'm going to wear mine and we can't wait to see you.
Keep a six-foot distance. Wear your mask. Wash your hands. Don't let your guard down as we can't afford to go backwards. Together, we can keep Lubbock safe and open. Lubbock is reopening safely. When you do your part, we can make Lubbock safe again.
It's time to open Lubbock again. And I think it's important that we do it in a responsible way to protect your family and mine. Everybody should wear their mask, keep social distancing. It's life and livelihood that keep Lubbock strong.
Keep a six-foot distance. Wear your mask. Wash your hands. Don't let your guard down as we can't afford to go backwards. Together, we can keep Lubbock safe and open.
Mayor, thank you. I, I think you, you see now some of the additional work that's been put in and the thoughtfulness and the importance of this as we gradually open our community.
Okay, that's, those are, those are fantastic. I, I, I'm hoping that maybe we can take and make, make one or, one or two of those, put it in Spanish too, so we can go to our, our Spanish-speaking media. I think that'd be a great opportunity for us to do that. I think Mr. Chides has sort of led the way in, in, in this effort. And I, I just think those are fantastic. And, and I, and if we could couple those with radio spots to go along with it, I think, I guess those could work as radio, but that's, those are, those are really good.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry that we didn't have the Spanish spots today. They're producing those this, this afternoon.
Okay, great. So we're, we're to consider an executive, excuse me, an emergency order tonight at our meeting at five o'clock. That order has been, a draft of that has been sent out to each of you, I believe. I'm going to let you refer to that right now, if you would. It is, it's going to be my request that this council consider adding to our emergency order, an exhibit which is, is called out in the order and is attached to the order at the back. And that would be the summer.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, if you would, let's go to page two. Let's go to page two. One of the things that was done is your city attorney's office worked to draft this for us. We have taken out a lot of what had been in prior declarations to where maybe the governor's orders left room and we were able to, to come up with local deals. That's largely been pulled. An exception does appear on the top of page two. This is simply a call out to the White House and to the CDC guidelines. This talks about vulnerable individuals, talks about physical distancing, groups not more than 10, minimize travel if you can, those things. This is not inconsistent with the governor's order and in fact is referenced in the governor's orders. We have simply printed it in the declaration for your consideration today. If you'll turn to page, we can skip page three. Let's go to number four, page four. You see here a very explicit statement. The mayor and then ideally the city council are going to adopt GA18. You're just going to adopt that in hold. Immediately below that in paragraph 12, stay home if you're sick. Okay, this does live from a prior declaration that the city has. And this is simply, and this is, this is actually enforceable under your public health authority, but if you are sick, you have COVID-19 symptoms, you need to stay home. That's been the rule. We're maintaining that as a rule. And then it defines what that means, how long you have to be without symptoms, et cetera. There are no changes to that. Go to page five, if you would. Here is where we call out the Lubbock Safe Program that Mr. Marcinkowski has just presented to you. The recommendation of the Lubbock Economic Recovery Task Force is for the mayor and the city council to adopt the voluntary Lubbock Safe Program. If you do that, the document that it was used to develop Dave's presentation is attached then to this declaration and continues forward. Number 14 is a call out that we may amend. The mayor or the designee of the mayor may amend these guidelines or clarify it or interpret it. amend these guidelines or clarify it or interpret it. This is tremendous work, there's going to be something that we need to move quickly to address, and this provides that authority to do so. Paragraph 17 at the bottom of page five, for any workplace that is open, you're going to have to do social distancing and good hygiene. So that's a rule, that is a rule. Lubbock Safe is voluntary. It's an opportunity for businesses to certify to their customers and to their staff, hey, we're going above and beyond. I think Robert Taylor mentioned minimum guidelines. You've got a voluntary way to demonstrate you're doing more than that in Lubbock Safe, but in number 17, regardless of whether you choose to participate in that or not, you're still going to follow those good rules. The final item I would point out to you is on number 24, it's bottom of six, top of seven. As the governor's GA 18 is set to go through May 15, so is this one. We know the governor will have to come back and issue an update. We expect the mayor and the city council to do the same. Of course, you have a city council meeting regularly scheduled, meeting on May the 12th. Mayor, counsel, I'll stop there, take a question if you'd like.
Why don't we go to Ms. Joy? She, she served on this, in this effort and was very involved. Latrell, I'll let you, let you start with comments, any questions you might have.
You're muted, Latrell.
Probably for me, it's more about comments than questions. I have to acknowledge what Steve Massengill said and what Dave Marcinkowski has said, but I think we need to take our hat off to Dave. There were times I'm sure he wanted to jump over his desk because we'd kind of get off on a tangent and he was really good about bringing us back to where we were. Otherwise, I don't think we would have gotten here. I know he worked after hours and early morning hours and so thanks for chairing our subcommittee. I really appreciate that. People have talked about willingness to compromise and look at both sides, and I think that's good. They've talked about conferring with the state strike force, we had cooperation there, which is very helpful. But at the top of the list, every time we got down to an issue, it's what's best for the citizens of Lubbock. And that's what this is about. I expect a healthy discussion today from council. And I know there are a lot of issues that medical would like to see us address that we can't, but I think we've done the very best we can with what we have. We're going to follow the governor's order, but at the same time, the body of the work that's done by the subcommittee will live on in our Keep Lubbock Safe campaign. We cannot do this by ourselves. The council can't do it, the committee can't do it, law enforcement can't do it. It really boils down to the citizens of Lubbock buying in and saying, hey, this is what we can do and we're going to do it. Because otherwise, it's just words on a piece of paper. And we don't need that. There are too many of us who are vulnerable. You know, this is really not about me or, it's really about looking out for other people. And if we look out for other people, we'll be looking out for ourselves at the same time. So really proud of this group. I learned a lot about restaurants, I learned a lot about retail, because people were willing to share and they were willing to share the good and the bad. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear from the rest of the council, because we've not really had that input at this point. So I'm going to stop and I want to hear from, from my fellow council people.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Let's go to the mayor pro temp, Mr. Griffith.
I can tell by this document, there's been a whole lot of work put into this. I can tell there was not a lot of sleep in the past two weeks. I applaud everyone that, on the task force and Robert and Dave, thank you very much for taking the leadership of this. We, I mean, there's a whole lot to it, to your point, there's a lot of categories. So it's amazing to look through this, the work that you all have done. I applaud you very much. But I also want to simplify it. I think the genius part of this is that we've got a message to our citizens, three things. Even, even I can remember three. Social distancing, wear a facial covering, and wash your hands. So it's really pretty simple. If folks will do this, this helps us get through this. Thank you all very, very much for your work. Humble about everything you guys and girls have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Let's, let's start, let's go to Mr. Christian next.
Myself, thanks, Mr. Mayor. This, this is really incredible work. There's a couple of things that, that come to mind immediately and it really has to do with what Ms. Joy said about, we can put all these rules in place and we can make all these recommendations, but if people don't follow them and don't understand the, the magnitude of, of what may or could happen in the future if we don't abide by some of these rules. I, I just encourage the local businesses to think about their, their business, their business model and what, what their business entails. Mr. Massengill and I had a conversation on Sunday, is what, what he might put in place in regards to the matador might be very different than what another store in regards to keeping his business safe and out of danger of being infected by COVID viruses. You know, face masks and face coverings have been obviously a big controversy, but in regards to Mr. Massengill's and I's conversation, there, there's, there's a lot of things that business owners can control. But the one thing that they really can't control is knowing the health conditions of the customers that's walking through their door. So, you know, it sounds kind of a little bad, but it's not meant to be. The most, most, especially the smaller merchants, smaller square foot merchants, they have to assume that every customer that walks in their door is asymptomatic carrier of COVID, COVID-19. So they, they're going to have to put some things in place of how they present the merchandise to their customers. Do they require all their customers to wear a mask? Because hey, I'm in a very, very high-risk category and so I wear a mask in stores for as much my protection as a stray sneeze. We all know that, you know, sometimes sneezes sneak up on us, not like a cough. We can hear a cough kind of working its way up through our throat, but what happened if a customer coughs in a, in one of these merchant stores? And what are they going to have to do to mitigate the possibilities of COVID-19? So my, I want to just, to summarize it, yeah, each, each business is going to have to figure out what model is best for them and they may have to put more, some more stringent rules based upon what they feel is best to keep their business safe.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mr. Chides?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, again, I extend my thank you to Steve, Robert, Dave, Ms. Latrell, job well done. I was somewhat worried about putting profit before people. You guys put that worry to rest. This program, the task force has taken on, is very prescriptive. I'm very much on board with that. The mayor kind of stole my thunder about the Spanish PSAs, which I'm glad that people are seeing that the necessity, the numbers of 206 cases out there in the, in the Hispanic neighbors, the, the, the population is 33%, yet we're making pretty close to 50% of the cases. It's unacceptable and we have to reach out to the Hispanic, to the entire city, but we've got to make sure we leave no one behind, because this COVID-19 does not discriminate. It's not jumping over my house to get to somebody else's. If I just happen to be there, I'm going to get struck down by it. So we've got to make sure we reach out to everybody in the neighborhoods, whatever we can, at least we have done our due diligence. Again, thank you, everybody on the committee has done a great job. And I'm glad, Steve, you said that the PSAs in Spanish are already being worked on. I did one a few days ago and I am not your best air quality person. So if you can knock mine off the air and put yours on there, more power to you, my friend. Again, I'm excited to see this happening. A word to the public, if you don't do your part by maintaining safe distances, as we continue telling you, I don't want to see another spike and thus having to do another shutdown. Because my concern is the second time this, or the next time it spikes, I would hate to hear that it's even gotten worse than what it is now. This is not to be taken lightly by anyone. This is a serious situation. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the task force, for the brilliant job you guys are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Ms. Patterson-Harris. You're still, you're still muted, Sheila. There you go.
I just have a quick question. I heard this statement that we have the various subcommittees. Who made up and how many participants did we have on the medical subcommittee?
Mr. Massengill?
Yeah, ask your next question and I'll look it up in the meantime and you call back on me and I'll explain it.
Sheila, anything else? Is that all you have? Do you have comments to?
That's, that's, that was my main concern. I just want to make sure and that we keep in mind throughout this and anything, that anytime we're dealing with the community, we want to always make sure that we're hearing and including every area of this city. I can't reiterate that enough and say even when we're getting the message out, make sure we're getting the message out so that we reach everybody. I know we get in a hurry and get going and want to get stuff out, but we have to stop and make sure that we're including everybody and that we want everybody to hear, hear the message. We want to get the message out in all fashion so that everybody will hear it in the city.
I've got the list.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Sheila. Well said.
Okay, so our, our medical science committee was chaired by Richard Parks from Covenant. Bishop Bill Watson was on that committee, Dr. Joshua Hill, Mark Thunderberg from UMC. That committee was advised by Catherine Wells, obviously well-known to this group, and John Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor, let's go to Mr. Taylor real quick and then Ms. Joy. Okay?
Yeah, just, just quickly, I want the council to know that it didn't stop there. We've reached out when we felt like we did not have maybe enough opinions in a certain area. I even went to my annual physical and the doctor questioned me for five minutes and I questioned him for about 30. So we reached out to dental, to people of the dental industry. So we did reach out to other people and so we did not stop at what just where the committee was. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Joy.
We, we didn't talk about this when we were going over the governor's order, but he has the ability to walk this opening back, restrict it more, and it's based upon our numbers and, you know, what we see going forward. And so people need to understand that that's why this is so very important. We want the economy to move on, but if our numbers take a dive, I don't think there's any question that, that he will back us up and we'll, we'll have some businesses closed. Don't think that's good for us or good for the economy. So he's really, in a backhanded sort of way, has put it on the people who live in Lubbock to make this work. And I trust that, that they can do that. I don't have any doubt that we can do it. The other thing that we really didn't, I think, give enough credit to is the Health Department, the Lubbock Health Department. They were doing things early on that a lot of cities didn't do. They were investigating, they were following up who had visited with whom, who had been around with whom. They spent all their time and their hours doing that and we have to give credit to Catherine Wells and to Dr. Cook, because I don't think we would be where we are today had it not been for their early intervention. They intervened early in the nursing facilities and identified that problem. And if you're watching any of the news and listening, even our neighbors in New Mexico are dealing with huge amounts of nursing home and assisted living cases and they got on it early. And so I just think we need to say thank you to Catherine and to her staff and to Dr. Cook.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I'm going to, I'm going to take us to executive session right here. We're going to continue discussing this topic there, but I'm going to, I'm going to add on to Ms. Joy's point by, with a couple of things. This, this council got a lot of grief two weeks ago or for a two-week, two and a half week period, because we interpreted the governor's order literally. And some of our neighbors, regional neighbors chose not to do so. They'd like to be in the position we're in today and I believe it's because the citizens of Lubbock took this seriously. Reopening does not kill this virus. As Dr. Cook likes to say, virus ain't got no legs, okay? And we've got to continue to do the right thing so we can prosper. And when I say prosper, I'm not talking about businesses prosper, I mean us live our lives, be able to go to football games this fall, be able to send our kids to school, be able to safely visit our grandparents in, in adult homes. There's a business on North University that was closed yesterday because they couldn't follow the rules. Our Health Department, our public health official have been on point the entire time. In fact, a lot of what you see from the state, I might add finally, on some of these senior living facilities, is what we've been doing here. And they, we've, our folks are actually in conversation with the CDC about what we've learned. This contact tracing that the governor talked about yesterday, we've been doing contact tracing since case one and we'll continue to do it. And we've got volunteers from the Health Science Center, medical students that are helping us do certain things that the Health Department does and nurses from LISD helping us do certain things so we can put more of our RNs from the Health Department out doing contact tracing. That means that we want to know where that person who's positive has been, so we can keep people safe. That'll continue to be our goal as we reopen. You know, the keys got taken away from us yesterday. You know, we were encouraged a month ago, six weeks ago, to take the lead and do the best things for our community. Well, the keys were taken away and that's the governor's prerogative. But we're going to offer another, through, through this recommendation, we're going to offer what I think is a Lubbock Safe model that the state will copy, because I believe it puts our citizens in the very best position to both enjoy retail, enjoy business, but to do it safely.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, is, if you might just briefly, how will somebody opt in to this program?
Great question. Let's sort of end with that. We'll go to executive session, we'll do our business there, we'll come back out a regular session at five. We're going to come back out at five tonight because we've scheduled a, we have a very brief meeting, as you guys have seen from our agenda, and we have a six o'clock press conference tonight. I think it's critical that we roll at six so we get this on the news. I think it's to the point of sharing the information. So Mr. Atkinson or Mr. Massengill, what do y'all would explain the way someone would, would, would opt in to Lubbock Safe? Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. We have currently, it's behind the electronic curtain, so to speak. We currently have a website that's set up, we have a web address, we have all of that. A business that chooses to participate in Lubbock Safe will go in to that website, it's a self-certification to start with. They'll certify, I will follow the general conditions, it'll take you to the next deal. I am a restaurant, therefore here are those other guidelines. They certify that, we get their business name, contact information, et cetera. Couple of things happens then, generates a notice back to staff.
Generates a notice back to staff. I have 20 staff members, as Mr. Marcinkowski mentioned, that are ready to go, and they will deliver those decals that the business will be able to place so that their customers see it, their employees will see that. We will go as fast as we can and get all of that delivered. We'll also list businesses by name. They've chosen to do this. They've gone through that certification. We will list them. We've been in very close contact through the LERT with the Chamber of Commerce and with others. We're going to do everything we can to let the public know these businesses have chosen to go above and beyond. We will get to the point that we'll be able to go back and do inspections, and certainly we'll respond if there's a complaint. But these people are making a choice to do more, and we're going to go as quick as we can so that 12:01 a.m. Friday, they're ready to take off running.
Mr. Atkinson, I'd be happy to help deliver those.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. We may take you up on that. Okay, once again, thanks to Mr. Taylor, Mr. Marcinkowski. We're going to, we're going to move to executive session now. Council will hold executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplating litigation or settlement agreement and hold consultation with Attorney under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Also discuss, to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property under section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. City council, it is 3:54, and we are recessed to executive session. Council, I will remind you, you need to leave this meeting and join the executive session meeting. Mr. Massengill will add you to that meeting. It's a hosted meeting, and then we will come back to our